So, Ms. Rowland, Ms. Rowland, if you're all up to come on up to the voting. And then I'm gonna do the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Rowland is with the Family Ministry Center in Fairhope, right here in Fairhope.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Commissioners, my name is Ann Rowan. I'm the lead pastor at FMC Church, Family Ministry Center. We're a non-denominational church located here in Fairhope where visitors become family. Amen. It's my pleasure to be here with you today. Commissioners, I want to thank you for all that you do for the Baldwin County families. And I feel blessed to be a part of it. It is my honor to deliver the invocation for this meeting. And this is more than just a prayer. It is an invitation for God's presence to come and make His presence known. And to guide us as we come together, as they make decisions, share ideas, and seek unity. Let us pray. Father God, we approach you this morning thanking you for all that you are. I thank you for the officials here today that you have placed in position. And I believe you have handpicked them to govern this county. I pray that as they make the important decisions for the good of the people, they will be in one mind and one accord, united together with the same purpose, united under one common cause. I pray that their influence in the decisions will impact the progress and the plans of Baldwin County and cause it to flourish beyond its greatest expectations. Let us not only remain the largest county, but let us remain the strongest in Alabama. God, I hold these honorable commissioners high before you today. And I pray that as they make these decisions, you will impart unto them godly wisdom. And I pray for the divine strategy they need as they seek your guidance to lead the people of Baldwin County to the greatest moments in history. I believe that they have been called and appointed for such a time as this because I have, I've just, like Isaiah, they, I believe that they have heard the voice of the Lord saying, "Whom shall I send and who will go for us?" And they have said, "Send us, Lord, here am I." Empower them to bear the load they carry and help them to serve with grace. I pray this in the powerful name of our beautiful Savior, Yahshua. In Jesus' name we pray, and everyone says, amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Past, Ms. Rowland, thank you very much, that was awesome. Commissioners, we got the adoption of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the March 5th, 2025 regular meeting.
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, Commissioner Ball?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, make a motion, we pay our bills.
I'll second it.
All right. You got a motion and a second to pay our bills. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve item BA2.
And I'll second that.
All right, got a motion and a second to approve BA2. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, by signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, Commissioners, just remember that we got to add GA1 to the consent.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we approve our consent agenda as discussed in our work session, adding the addenda item to the consent agenda, which is item GA1 on the printed agenda.
I'll second that motion.
All right, got a motion and a second to approve the consent. Any further discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We got presentations. Employee of the quarter for the fourth quarter of 2024.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning.
Once again, I'm honored to be able to present our employees of the quarter for the fourth quarter of 2024. As you may know, our employee of the quarter program is to publicly recognize our outstanding employees, those that go above and beyond, contribute more than they should, more than they need to. And we continue to be proud of these employees that are nominated. So, without further ado, with our Brats Department, we have Ron Stewart to present with Ms. Suzie Smith.
Good morning. If you ask Ms. Suzie, she'll tell you she hasn't done anything special. She's just coming to work today and doing the job that she does every day. She's a, she exemplifies what this program's about, the employee of the quarter. When she's, she comes to work, she does a great job, she brightens, you know, when people, unfortunately, when people pass you, you hear people say, you know, when they walk into a room, they light up the room. That's the way Ms. Suzie is. She's a blessing. And our, when we moved our new facility over to where we are now, we didn't have anyone to clean. Ms. Suzie stepped up and volunteered to do that on herself without anything extra coming to her. She's, she's been a dedicated employee. She's been a blessing to the Brats Department and to the citizens of Baldwin County. And I'm excited to be able to, today, to be able to present this to Ms. Suzie. She's an outstanding young lady.
I was telling Mr. DeVitri, my late brother-in-law, when he stood up to say something, his mind always sit down. That's me. But I'm honored, I told her, I said, "I went to work when I was 15 years old, and I've never had anything like this before."
That's awesome.
Honoring me.
Yeah, that's awesome.
For what I do, but I love what I do. I only work part-time, Tuesdays and Thursdays, but I love those three days that I work. I enjoy helping people. And I appreciate this, this certificate very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. We get the picture? You want to get it up? Well, Ms. Suzie, while the Commissioners are coming back up here, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for what you do. And that's, it's great to see this happen. And I'm appreciated, Deidre, for doing this for our employees, so thank you.
Oh, yeah, I want to say something because when I hear things like that, it just, the Brats Department is a great department in the county. I feel like that people who don't know what all Brats do, you're just missing out. And, and we hear such wonderful stories from, I do, from people who have understood and use Brats. And for people to enjoy what they do, it just, it's a blessing, you know? It's just a huge blessing to have employees who enjoy that. And, you know, you really touched my heart when you said that you'd never gotten anything like this before, but you know what? Now you have. And thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Gruber?
Yep. Thank you so very much for what you do. You know, golly, you know, people don't realize how much the Brats transportation means to a lot of our citizens. You know, sometimes it's only means that they have to get out and enjoy life. And, you know, the Brats provides that service, and we're so lucky to have it here in Baldwin County. And thank you for what you do, and all of the Brats, you know, they, they work very hard, you know, to help our, our citizens in this county. Thank you much.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Suzie. This is great, this is a great start to our meeting today, to be able to recognize some employees. And you had a, you had a really heartfelt story, so that we don't, you know, I don't know how long I've been working, but you're right, it is sometimes it's good to be recognized in all those years, I think I've been working since I was about 13. So, it's always good to be recognized by your peers and by your coworkers and supervisors and stuff because it's something you'll remember for the rest of your life. So, thank you again for your service. It shows that you're really passionate about what you do, and we appreciate that.
Thank you, Susan.
Excuse me, and we have one more for today with the Highway Department. We have Mr. Mark Ackerman to present Nick McCauley.
So, we have several subdivision, different divisions within the Highway Department. And one of the most important divisions that we have is Traffic Ops. For those that don't know, Traffic Ops manages our paving, our guardrails, our signage, our traffic control, and most importantly, our traffic signals. So, Mr. Nick is part of that team that manages all the traffic signals that are owned by the Highway Department by the county. So, I want to ask John Lundy, who's his immediate supervisor, and also new team member as well as the Traffic Ops Manager, to say a few words about Mr. Nick.
As Mark mentioned, I'm John Lundy, and I'm here to represent the Traffic Operations Team. I work Traffic Operations Team. And we would like to recognize Nick for his dedication to Baldwin County. Nick, he, oh, I lost the train, trying to thaw. Nick, he's an outstanding employee. He helps train new employees, not just in traffic signals. He helps train employees with the paving crews, the signals, the sign crews. Nick, we're just, we're proud to have you on our team.
Yeah, I just want to say I'm appreciative of this. And I appreciate the Commission and our management team for the ability to do my job. And appreciative of the team leadership we have and working with us on what we need, and y'all, working on what we need to do our job safely when we're on the roads. I think everybody has noticed the bright yellow high-vis shirts that we were given to, to help us be safe so that we make our county better. But at the end of the day, we can go home safely to our family.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I was gonna say, what a lot of people don't realize is when traffic signals go down, it doesn't matter what time of the day it is, whether it's midnight, 1:00 a.m., or 9:00 o'clock in the morning. But Nick's the individual that goes out no matter what time it is, no matter how bad the weather is. And he's the one that gets those traffic signals back operational. So, when we get those calls and the signals down at this intersection, that's the guy that's going out. And no matter what kind of weather, what kind of time of day, and making sure that our citizens are safe.
Yeah, because they rarely go out when it's good weather. I meant the signals go out.
They do. You know, especially when you get the rain events, the lightning, it does happen quite often. And, and sometimes they come back on and they're not working right either. So, but Nick's that guy. Nick's the guy that we can always depend on, is gonna go out and do it in a safe manner, but make sure that the people around us are safe, can get home safely.
That's right. And, you know, our county engineer came up to me, and it's one thing that I wanted to say is, Nick, thank you for, you know, mentioning that about what you wear and to go home safe and to go home to your family. And, you know, I want the public to realize when they're, our workers are out there, they have these vests on for a reason, for you to see them and to, you know, be, you know, go slow, Brent, when they've got a construction zone or out there working, paving the road or patching up potholes, or whatever they're doing. Just, you know, be safe out there and watch out for our employees. Because they, they got a home and they want to go to their family too. So, I just wanted to thank you, Mark, I appreciate it. Thank you again, Nick, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I do. Thank you so much. You know, it's something that I've been studying in leadership studies. John Maxwell has this law of solid ground in leadership, and there's really three aspects to that, which is protection, provision, and, oh, progress. And so, what you do is part of all of those, but most importantly, is protect the citizens. Those traffic signals are so important. Of course, I have learned to call them traffic signals, but growing up here in Alabama and in Baldwin County, there were always a red light.
That's right.
I couldn't go without saying that. But, but thank you so much. I know there's more than that type of signal out there. But a whole new world opened up to me when, when I become a Commissioner. I noticed things that I, that never would have noticed before. But it's thankful to you and people that work with your team. And I'm thankful that we're able to give you the, the tools and things that you need. But thank you so much, thank you.
Mr. Gruber?
Thank you so very much, Nick. You know, it's, people don't realize how important these traffic lights and stuff are. Once they, people get used to them, they miss them. And you'd be surprised, when it goes out, everybody goes into pure chaos, you know, and they just want to just, they want to pull their hair out, they don't know which way to go and everything else. But, you know, as an ex-employee with the Highway Department for 30 years, you know, we didn't have a lot of lights, but we had stop signs and stuff like that that, you know, we had to put up in, in the middle of the night and stuff like that. And, you know, people don't realize, but it takes dedication, you know, to, to be able to do all these things. And I thank you so very much for the work that y'all do in the Traffic Department and all the Highway Department, you know, so y'all do a great job. And thank you very much.
My sentiments exactly so. Congratulations on getting the certificate as well. We really appreciate echoing what the other Commissioners have said, how important that this is for our county, especially a fast-growing county with a lot of vehicles on the road. Your guys' jobs are real important. And like the Chairman said, just be patient when they're out working on things, and you may have to divert traffic and go around and just be slow with the process because all these are the improvements that everybody's wanting. So, sometimes, you know, progress is a little bit slow and it's, and it's meant to be that way. So, we do the job right the first time. And so, Nick, congratulations on your certificate of employee of the quarter, as much deserved. And it comes highly recommended by your, your staff and your supervisors. And so, it's something definitely to be proud of. And keep, keep doing what you're doing, being a mentor to the other employees that are coming up because there's a leader in every group, not just your supervisor, but for those of y'all that's out there actually doing that work on those traffic signals or whatever it is you're doing, if you're a great leader, those other guys that's working around you will want to follow you and be just like you. So, always keep that spirit up and good job on going out, going the extra mile, not to just think for yourself, but to think for other people at the same time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ball. Last word I want to say is that, you know, the county employees don't get enough recognition, to be honest, you know? They do a lot of work for the county, and the citizens don't see it. But I just want to thank them again, to all the county employees that works for Baldwin County. And especially the ones that, you know, the citizens reach out to us and say, "Hey, we need this pothole fixed, hey, just want to let you know." And the Commissioners turn around and forward that email or that complaint or whatever to the Highway Department, and they get it. The employees go out there right then and fix it. And I'm very proud of them, how they do that, and I'm very proud of them. So, I just wanted to say that to all the employees, thank you all. All right? We got planning and zoning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
This is case Z2451, the Hegel property. And their request is to rezone from B C Z to R S F 1. Here's the location of the subject property within the county. They're located in Planning District 8. The property is southeast, in the southeast portion of Fairhope, in the northeast corner of County Road 13 and County Road 32. The current use of the property is residential. And they are requesting to rezone so the owner can sell a one-acre lot with their residence. And the rest of the property surrounding this one-acre lot with the existing residence will be used as farmland and buffer. And here's the subject property and adjacent property images. Here's the locator map and the site map. To the north, we have base community zoning, which is agricultural. To the south, we have R S F 3, residential, single-family, also agricultural land use. We also see B C Z to the east, residential land use. And then to the west, we have the city of Fairhope. Staff believes all the factors in this rezoning request have been met, other than number two. And staff's recommendation is approval. The Planning Commission also voted to recommend approval with a vote of six to zero. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Any questions, Commissioner?
No questions.
No questions. All right, before I open up the public hearing, if there, I don't see anybody signed up for this case. But I just, if you're here to speak on any case that we have in front of us, just please be respectful. Identify yourself, where you live, stay on topic, be respectful of others, maintain decorum, and be factual, be concise, or excuse me. Stick with the allotted time that I give you. I'm gonna give you three to five minutes if you're an individual, or five minutes for a group. And when you come up, please tell me what group that you are with. That way, we know, and I'll give you five minutes. But let me open up the public hearing. Is there anybody here that wants to speak on ES1 that did not sign up? Case number Z24-51, the Hegel property rezoning. All right, nobody? Close public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. Go ahead.
I was gonna say, I make a motion that we approve the zoning request for Z8, Z24-51, the Hegel property.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, by signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, case number Z24-55.
All right, this is Z2455, No Doubt Holdings LLC property. Their request is to rezone from B C Z to R R. Here's the location of the property within the county. It's located in Planning District 39. The property is south of Nick's Lane and west of State Highway 181 in the Fairhope community. The current use of the property is vacant, and they would like to rezone for a contractor's yard. Here's the images that are adjacent to the property. Here's the locator map and the site map. The property is surrounded by base community zoning, and we see commercial, residential, and vacant land uses. Staff believes all the factors in this rezoning request-
the factors in this rezoning request have been met, except for number three, and staff recommends approval of their request, and the Planning Commission also recommended approval of their request. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners?
Right, ma'am.
All right, open up the public hearing on case number Z24-55. Nobody signed up for it. I have no piece, a piece of paper in front of me with their names. So is anybody that did not sign up that wish to speak? All right, close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve case Z24-55, No Doubt Holdings LLC property rezoning.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve, Z24-55. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that passed. All right, next case, Z24-56. You've got all these, huh?
I have the first three. This is Z2456, the Green Property rezoning, and their request is to rezone a half an acre from R S F 1 to R S F 2 for a common move of property line. Here's the location of the property within the county. It is located in Planning District 35 and is located on the south side of Keller Road, and the applicant would like to rezone in order to perform a common move of property line with the adjacent parcel. Here's the locator map and the site map. The property is surrounded by R S F 1 zoning to the southeast and west with residential land uses, and to the north is the city of Foley with a business. And here is the subject property and adjacent property images. Staff believes the majority of the factors in this request have been met, and staff recommends approval. The Planning Commission also recommended approval. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Commissioners?
I don't have any.
All right. All right, open up the public hearing for case Z24-56. I have nobody signed up for this case. So is anybody here that wants to speak on this? All right, hearing none? Close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve case number Z24-56, Green Property rezoning.
I'll second it.
All right, got a motion and a second to approve the rezoning. Do I have any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, case number Z24-57.
All right, this is a request to rezone from B 3 to B 4. The subject property is located in Planning District 12, near the Locksley area. It is located on the west side of State Highway 59 and just north of Dawson Road. The current use is commercial, and the applicant is asking that it goes from B 3 to B 4. Here you can see the subject property on the screen, and to the north is some B 4, to the south is B 3, and there's also some residential and rural agriculture in the area. Most of the adjacent land uses are commercial. Here, staff reviewed all the factors. They're all met except number three, and staff has recommended approval, and the Planning Commission also recommended approval, six to zero.
I have a question for staff.
Yes.
This is on kind of a curve in Locksley, if I'm not mistaken. Kind of that, where that comes together there.
Yes.
Is, will the new access, that goes by ALDOT's Access Management Plan on 59.
Correct.
But will the side portion, or is it just, it doesn't come all the way to the corner, does it?
No, all their access would be off of 59.
So it would be completely through ALDOT's access?
Correct.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions?
None.
Open up the public hearing. I have nobody signed up for this case. Is anybody in the audience that wants to speak on this case? All right, hearing none? Close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve, approve the rezoning request from B 3 to B 4 on case number Z24-7.
And I'll second that motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve case number Z24-57. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Then we got the next case, case number PRD, it's a PRD 24-10, Twin Lakes.
All right, this is a PRD request for two lakes, phases one and two. It's a planned residential development with a 114-unit RV park. The subject property is located near the Gov, near Gov Shores and Orange Beach area. It is on the west side of Roscoe Road, about 1,000 feet north of Bradford Road. It's in Planning District 30. It is currently zoned RV 2, which is a recreational vehicle park district. It consists of about 40 acres, and it will have 114 RV sites. The density is 3.29 units. They are showing 26.12 acres of open space, and 15.58 acres is usable. The subject property was rezoned to, from B 3 to RV 2 in 2021, and also received approval for Phase 1 at that time. The applicant is asking for PRD approval for Phase 2, as well as Phase 1 again, because the applicant wants to put, allow casitas on each site, little cottages. So that's why he's bringing Phase 1 back, to have that option of putting the casitos on there. Here you can see the subject property is surrounded by RA zoning. There's some residential to the south, and then you have Orange Beach and Gov Shores nearby. Here is their site plan. And staff has recommended approval with the following conditions. If the northern 30-foot landscape buffer of existing vegetation is reduced during construction or is inadequate, staff may require additional plannings. If the commission approves the construction of casitas on each site, the recorded plat for Phase 1 must be amended to remove the note that no single-family dwellings are allowed. And also for Phase 2, the applicant must submit preliminary and final plat applications to sell individual sites. A construction plan review application is required before starting construction or installing any improvements. Our stated staff has recommended approval, and the Planning Commission also recommended approval.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Yes, I've got one on the PRD. Is it because of the cottages, is that why they're having to do the PRD?
Because, well, they're going to sell each RV site. It's going to be an individual lot, not a overall RV park owned by one person. Each site will be.
Sold.
This own.
Well, which actually, this is more of what a PRD is supposed to be. It's supposed to have mixed type of, of residential uses in there, and not just one classification.
Right.
Is really the, the idea, and not just a, I'm sorry, but not just a manipulation of our subdivision regulations, but thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Open up the public hearing on case number ES, oh, excuse me, case number PR, it's a PRD 24-10. I have one person signed up, Chris Leib. Did I pronounce your last name right?
You did. You're one of the very few.
Well, I had to, I had to ask Commissioner, Commissioner Underwood.
I told him.
To make sure.
Well, thank you. My name is Chris Leib with Leib Engineering Company. I'm here on behalf of the owner, and I'll just be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, y'all got any questions?
I don't.
I don't have any.
No, I don't need any.
Thank you for your time.
And anybody else that wants to speak on this case that did not sign up? Okay, close the public hearing.
Questions, real quick. Do we have to do the?
Will we just vote on the PRD number there?
Do the?
Take care of all that?
Yeah, it's got the recommendations and the.
You ready?
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
I'll make a recommendation that we approve case number PRD 24-10.
I'll second the motion.
All right, got a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, it passed. All right, case number TA 25-01, the Amendments to Ballin County Zoning Ordinance.
Y'all take care.
All right, there's two parts to this text amendment. I'm going to present the first part, which is a amendment to the zoning map, and then when I get done, Jay will come up and present the changes to the zoning ordinance.
Sure. Thank you.
All right. So this is a request to rezone some property from B C Z to R S F 2. The subject property is located in Planning District 37, and it is on the northeast corner of Highway 104 in St. Michael's Way. It is currently vacant, and the applicant is asking for the rezoning for residential development. Here you can see it's surrounded by B C Z zoning and also RA, rural agricultural. Most of the uses in this area are agricultural or residential. The subject property does fall within a mid-density development potential area. Also, the mid-density development area supports residential zoning from R S F 3 to R T F 6, and also some business districts. Staff recommends approval of this, and the Planning Commission also recommended approval of the rezoning request.
Thank you. So I'll go through the text amendment portion. All right, so the, as you all are aware, we've been working on some amendments to the zoning ordinance text for a little while. There was really six kind of categories that we worked on was, you know, one was just updating some definitions and some general clarification. You know, we had a couple revisions to some of the local provisions that we'll go through, some minor changes to three of the zoning districts, RA, B C Z, and R S F 3. We had a pretty significant update to the PRD, Plan Development Section. You know, we talk about that a lot every month. There's a lot of questions and comments that come about our current regulations regarding PRDs. We also updated, just added some clarification to our wetland and stream overlay district. There were some things that have come up over the past few years about how we enforce that, that has caused some confusion. And so, and of course, Selena just went over the zoning map amendment that we have proposed. So getting into the first section, and I'll just kind of hit the high points in the presentation, probably glad to answer any, any other questions when we're through. For Article 2, the local provisions, the first one is Plan District 25, which is Fort Morgan. We've been working with that citizen advisory group down there for quite some time about some different changes that they wanted to do with their local provisions. One is regarding the off-street parking. As you all know, this is a high, heavy tourism district, and so they've got some special needs when it comes to how they handle parking for single-family and duplex structures down there with, with the weekly rentals and things. So currently, our parking ordinance doesn't allow tandem parking, which is stack parking, one behind the other. So obviously, all these houses down there are elevated houses and the parking underneath them. And so to, to reduce impacts to the site, which is what we're all trying to accomplish down there, is have reduced impacts on each lot, we want to allow stacked parking underneath that house to be able to, to count for their parking requirements. So the second piece of this was the dune walkovers. We've had a lot of variances. Have to go to the Board of Adjustments just because of how our language was written in our current regulation. What it is, it has some conflicts with Fish and Wildlife and A D M permits. So what we want to do is bring that into alignment with what Fish and Wildlife requires and what A D M requires. And so primarily, that's it. Without going through all the details, we just wanted to say our requirements are the same as Fish and Wildlife and A D M. The one additional thing we did add is we want to make sure that those dune walkovers do tie in at ground level, within 36 inches of ground level. We don't want them going up to the elevated decks and things like that. So they just have to tie in at ground level, must be accessible from ground level. The last thing for District 25 is the wetland buffers. You know, District 25 is a pretty unique area from an environmental standpoint. They have multiple different types of wetlands, and it's the only place in the county that has interdunal swell wetlands. And what those are, they're these depressions in between the, the dune system on the south side of the Fort Morgan Road that really provide stormwater storage. So, you know, it's causing a lot of variances, because we have to treat them a little differently than normal wetlands. So we wanted to reduce that, that natural buffer from 30 feet down to 10 feet, which would help fix a lot of variances we have to keep going through down there. And just for clarity, too, the Corps of Engineers doesn't even consider those jurisdictional wetlands. They're jurisdictional by A D M, but not the Corps of Engineers. So they're definitely a special type of wetland. But again, we want to, you know, discourage any kind of filling of those swells, because the main thing they provide is stormwater storage in those areas. So we have some provisions there to kind of discourage those from being filled in, and making sure that we allow proper stormwater storage. The next one is Section 2.3.26, which is the local provisions for Plan District 26. Working with a couple of the, the members of Plan District 26, they wanted to explore allowing PRDs in certain circumstances within the point clear area. And the language we came up with was, because right now, currently, the PRDs are completely disallowed in District 26, and they wanted to explore the possibility of, of allowing them. And so what we proposed was, if a PRD is allowed in Plan District 26, it has some heightened regulations, it has to be at least 250 acres, and have at least 50% open space, half of which must be usable for equestrian facilities, golf courses, country clubs, parks, pedestrian walkways, and things like that. So, so it would be some heightened requirements for the open space out there. Moving on to Article 3, the Rural Agricultural District, what we wanted to do here was, you know, RA is primarily, it's our agricultural district, so it's primarily farmland. And what we wanted to do was lessen some of the restrictions for true farming operations. And so, say, if you're zoned RA and you're doing, you have agriculture operations as we define it, and as the, as federal government defines it, then you can be exempt from a lot of our zoning permit requirements. Because we, we don't want to impede our farmers. We want to let them, you know, go do what they do with as little interference from us as possible. And part of that was we added a definition for agricultural buildings. So if they're going and building a barn, or a silo, or whatever they need as part of their operations, then they still got to get their building permit, but they don't need to come to Planning and Zoning to get any kind of permits from us. So it gives them some relief with some zoning regulations. In B C Z, really, we just wanted to remove two of the things that were expressly disallowed. Without going through a ton of detail on this, basically, it was saying, the current regulation says that you can't have, if, if your primary dwelling is a, is a manufactured home, you can't have an RV or another manufactured home as a secondary dwelling. Well, there's a problem with that. The Code of Alabama explicitly says that Ballin County Planning and Zoning can have no jurisdiction of the type of single-family dwelling. So we can't, for that primary structure, we can't differentiate between a stick-built home and a manufactured home. So we had, we just didn't, we didn't remove those things. And just to be clear, we also, we, across all zoning districts, we don't allow RVs to be occupied as a primary dwelling anywhere. So that's, you know, we don't need to restate that just in this zoning district. R S F 3 district, we noticed we had a little gap in our current residential districts. R S F 2 was an 80-foot lot width minimum at 15,000 square feet, but then it went to R S F 3, which is still 80,000, 80-foot lot width minimum, but went down to 10,000 square feet. So it basically made it, dimensionally, you couldn't really make that work to build a home on it. And, you know, really, R S F 3 was just not being utilized, because if you had to have an 80-foot lot width anyway, they would just go to R S F 2. So we just found, there's a gap that's been kind of coming up a lot, so we wanted just to correct that, and so reduce that minimum lot width for R S F 3 to 70 feet. The lot size remains 10,000 square feet as currently adopted. So getting into the PRDs, which is probably the most substantial change that was made, we want to really clarify. There's a lot of uncertainty about what, what we want to really clarify, there's a lot of uncertainty about what a P R D really should be. And so we added some clarification in there and then I rewrite this. So when it talks about use intensity design, the permitted uses shall be allowed within the underlying zoning district except to extent modified by the P R D. That was very unclear in our current regulations that, hey, your uses, you can ask for a change in allowable uses as part of your P R D, you just can't ask for a change in density. So the second part is that, you know, whatever the density of the underlying zoning district or districts, you know, sets your density, you can't exceed that no matter what. But the other thing we wanted to make it very clear that any variations from the underlying zoning district has to be explicitly spelled out in the P R D, otherwise it's not approved as part of the plan. As far as the design, and this is probably what most of the topic always comes up about, is P R Ds should be designed as one or more neighborhoods that are oriented around activity center or centers, such as village centers or neighborhood centers, designed as functional focal points of the development. So what this means, you know, when you talk about a planned community, it has to have some kind of identity. It can't just be a subdivision that has variations to it. It has to have a true center, whether it's a, you know, what those centers should include, should be where the higher-density residential uses are, it should include parks, community centers, commercial activities. It should be kind of that little village center node that the community is identified by. And if the development, if a P R D is being proposed within a quarter mile of our rural nodes and our different nodes that we have in our master plan, we want to encourage them to design off of those. So we say that those may be used as one of the activity centers because we want P R Ds to help, you know, be aligned with the master plan and have those nodes develop as shown in the master plan. P R Ds should include a range of housing choices to serve the needs of different desired market segments. Commissioner Underwood, you just mentioned that, but that's a very important piece of P R Ds, that should have multiple market points that fits our housing needs that we struggle with throughout the county. Commercial land uses within a P R D.
Wait, just to clarify that.
Sorry.
Explain, like, when I asked you the question about it when preparing for the meeting, that doesn't mean every single house in there is a, you could have a tiny house, you could have a townhouse, you could have a regular, just different uses. I'm sorry, mixed types.
Yeah, different kind of intensity of residential uses. So you could have smaller homes up to larger homes that has, that hits different market segments, which should be a key point.
Which has been a huge quest from individuals to not have, I know the affordable is not the right word, but something that's in different price ranges, I guess you would say. Okay.
Right.
Thanks.
So the commercial, any commercial land uses for mixed use, you know, you can't have any more than 20% of a commercial use within a P R D, and the commercial uses shall be located within the activity center. The other, the last thing was the P R D shall meet the open space requirements. What we did, we updated the open space article to align with the newly adopted subdivision regulations, so we have the same open space requirements in both documents, which was really key. So to give you a little example of Commissioner Underwood, what you're talking about there, you can see, like, this is just some example developments that I pulled off of the internet. You know, it's nowhere in Baldwin County. But in this particular one, you see the bottom right, they have three different housing types, lot sizes, and different things. That center highlighted area is kind of where their activity center is, where they have their recreational facility and kind of their center that gives their neighborhood the focal point and identity. And then that light blue, bluish-green everywhere else around the lots, that's the more passive open space, so where they have preservation. So when we talk about this design, these are the things we're talking about. And then if you have a mixed-use development that's just hypothetically near one of our nodes, you can see the commercial land use was kind of tucked up into the corner there where the rural node would be. They have a secondary activity center where their recreational amenities are up in, you know, kind of the center of the development. And you can see this particular one has a range of housing types from, you know, townhomes to small lots up to larger estate lots. And so those are the kind of ideas, when you look at a planned community, that really should be incorporated. And that's what our text aligns with. So the last thing with P R Ds is kind of what we, some of our heightened submittal requirements to make sure we're really clear on what the master plan that's being approved is. We will start requiring traffic studies to be submitted as part of the P R D. That's been a lot of discussion about that in the past, and certainly is appropriate for a P R D to have, understand what the traffic impacts are up front. Wetland delineation, but the main thing is we'll have kind of about four primary documents. One is a proposed land use plan that clearly identifies the housing types, generalized area, all this very details about what kind of housing's there. The open space plan, like I mentioned, that meets Article 17. A circulation plan, so we understand how traffic and pedestrians circulate inside and outside of the development. And then a utility, a conceptual utility service plan, so we understand what the utility impacts are going to be and how they fit. And then finally, the narrative that just very clearly describes what this development is trying to accomplish with the P R D and how it meets all those requirements. And clearly specifies any deviations from the underlying zoning district, so it's very clear what was asked for that was not explicitly allowed in the underlying zoning district. So that's it for the overview of the P R Ds. Moving on to the wetland and stream overlay district, the biggest thing here is, you know, there was a lot of, it was very unclear about how the boundary of the wetland overlay district was determined. And so we wanted to make it very clear that the boundary of the wetland overlay district can only be determined by a USACE jurisdiction J D, because they are the agency that regulates wetlands, and so we want to say that only they can tell us that that is a jurisdictional wetland, and that does fall within the boundary of our overlay district. So we put the landowners responsible for getting that, and if it's a non-jurisdictional wetland, it's also the landowners' responsibility to give us the documentation that is considered non-jurisdictional. Because in the past, we were kind of caught in the middle of this, and it got us into some very challenging situations. You know, we did still allow the opportunity that if an owner didn't want to wait the time it takes the Corps to get a J D, that in certain situations, we could approve accepting a wetland delineator's delineation if they have no impacts. But they would have to basically say, we understand, we're voluntarily going to come into the overlay district because we're not going to wait on the Corps. So we did give them that path if they don't want to wait on the Corps. The next piece of that was just clarifying some of the exemptions. So anything that has a Corps nationwide 18 permit, which is a very minor impact permit, they are automatically exempt. Like I said, so if they're fine with the Corps of that, they're fine with our regulations. We, you know, they minimize fill to access a site, or minimize encroachment into the wetland buffer to get up to a tenth of an acre available uplands, which we already had that in our regulations now, but we had some clarification because it was a little bit ambiguous about what that statement meant in the current regulations. But any kind of marine accessory uses are exempt, so piers, boat houses, those type of things, they obviously don't need to adhere to that. And then agricultural uses, as we define, that was another important piece, like, so if you're being, if you're farming, you know, and the Corps says you're fine with your farming operations, we're not going to come enforce zoning ordinances on farmers that are just doing their duties. So that's it for the wetland overlay district. The final piece was the zoning amendments. So the staff review, one of the main things we were doing was trying to streamline this process, because it's kind of a, it's kind of a multi-step process that takes a lot of time and maybe a little overly bureaucratic at this point. But so, but also, we wanted to set some hard, just like we did in the subdivision regulations, we wanted to set some firm deadlines of when staff has to have their reports done and when the public hearing has to be held. So the first piece is within 45 days of a correctly completed application, the planning director shall deliver to the planning zoning commission and the county commission a written report summarizing. So our staff reports have to be completed within 45 days of a completed application to us. Then within 60 days of a completed application, the county commission shall hold the public hearing about the rezoning. So there's some hard deadlines on when that happens. And of course, we'll make that align with our normal meeting schedule, so we won't be having special meetings or anything. But it puts some timelines and kind of creates some efficiency in our rezoning process. The second piece was, as you saw in a few of the other things today, the criteria for which rezonings are judged by. There's some things that are kind of duplication in our current regulations, so we wanted to streamline that and kind of whittle it down to about five or six review criteria, which is degree of compatibility with existing allowable land uses in the vicinity, I mean, which is what we're already kind of doing, but this clarifies it in the regulation. Degree of conformity with the proposed rezoning to the master plan. Again, right now, it's kind of a, hard, the statement's hard to measure. It says, does it better conform to the master plan? Nothing's ever going to completely conform or completely not conform. So we have a degree of conformity, which I'll show you how we're going to measure that in a moment. The next one is proximity of the proposed rezoning to existing transportation network and utility infrastructure. Those are two, at the rezoning stage, those are the major components we need to understand. It's like, is this the proposed rezoning in an area that can support future growth? Does it have the proper transportation network in the area and proper utility infrastructure in the area? So this is, again, trying to separate, we're not talking about localized traffic improvements to turn lanes and things like that. We're saying, is the network, transportation network available there? The next three are actually already in our regulations, so we're going to keep them in there, timing of the requests and development trends of the area, so is it appropriate, given what's going on? Does it have any impacts to the environmental conditions of the vicinity or historic resources of the county? And then impacts to health, safety, and welfare of the county and vicinity. So when I talked about degree of conformity to the master plan, this was something that actually was developed as part of the master plan, but we've never really utilized. We need to do a little bit of updates to it. But there's a scorecard tool that basically evaluates four categories, land use, environment, connectivity, and character. And once you go through and review it, it gives you a score, you know, based on how much it conforms to all these questions for each one of those categories. And it gives you, it gives you an output of either it strongly, the master plan strongly supports rezoning, it somewhat supports rezoning, does not support rezoning, or strongly does not support. I think that's a much better way of evaluating, because, you know, rezonings, it's not a checkbox. It's a very subjective review, and we got to have a better way of kind of measuring that to give you guys some better information on how to understand the conformity to the master plan. So the final piece here is the public notice and hearings. You know, we've talked about this a lot over the last several months. There's, you know, our current process is very confusing, quite honestly, to a lot of people, and it adds, you know, a lot of time to get into the decision point for rezonings. So what we wanted to do was, so if we have a zoning ordinance or text amendment, you know, they would continue on their current process. Because if we remember what the state law says, what the duty of the planning commission is to develop the master plan and to make a recommendation of the master plan to the county commission, and to develop ordinances and regulations and make recommendations to the county commission. But the duty, their primary job is to aid the county commission to do your, to do the duties your task with. And so what we're trying to do here is just better align our ordinances with the state law. And so text amendments, so obviously, that's making recommendations on regulations, so that would continue on its current process with two public hearings, one public hearing at the planning commission and a public hearing here at the county commission. For rezonings, it would go, the rezoning map amendment would go straight to the county commission. The planning commission would still get copies of the staff report, and they can provide their input to you all, you know, at the meeting, through email, however they want to do. So we still want to hear their input on it, but it would just not, it doesn't need to go to a public hearing at that stage, because what happens, a lot of times, citizens and people will show, and even applicants will show up at planning commission and think, that's it. And then they don't realize that the decision actually lies here with the county commission, and so they don't come here. So we'll meet all the advertising requirements and the public hearing requirements, but all those in the state law are really designed around the county commission meeting, not the planning commission meeting. So within, like I mentioned earlier, the county commission will hold a public hearing within 60 days of a completed application for rezoning cases. And then once there's action taken, a notice of action will be sent out to all the planning commission members also, so they understand what's going on and what was decided. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Jay, I've got one. And when I went to the meeting, the planning and zoning commission meeting, the last one, 1st of March, you know, I asked, in the work session, I asked the planning and zoning commission how, you know, were they in favor of that, of taking that responsibility and giving it? They won't hear the rezoning case, they would just mainly come to the county commission. And I kind of, you know, there was more than I was expecting that didn't want that. They still wanted to hear it, you know, hear the cases. And I know what we're trying to do is streamline things and make it easier, but it's really going to put more hardship on the county commission now, I think, my opinion only. But, you know, the ones that raised a hand that I asked, it was like five or six of them that didn't want that. They wanted still to hear the case and make a recommendation. And I guess I just wanted to, you know, is that something that, I don't know, I know not all the planning and zoning commission was there, there were some that were absent, but I just felt like that, you know, to leave it with them, they felt like they were part of something when they make a recommendation. And I know you're still going to let them make a recommendation, and we'll still see it.
It's really more about the public hearing and the way that, like, we would still encourage them to send you all, or even send to us to put in the file for our report, that what their thoughts on the rezoning are. Because, yeah, but the main thing is the tedious process of a second public hearing that really, you know, that public hearing, there's, the decision for any kind of zoning map amendment or zoning text amendment ultimately falls on this body. And so we're going through a public hearing process and kind of, just kind of have this overly bureaucratic process that's really, that's not the decision point, the decision point is here. So it's about, you know, understanding, you know, what the real focus and duties of the planning commission are and getting to that decision point, you know, in the most efficient way possible. And there are, you know, there's another county in the state, they have a, you know, it's different because each zoning in Alabama is all done by local legislation. So each county, there's only five counties that have zoning, but each county has a different set of rules to go by because they have different acting legislation by the state legislature. But there is, there is other examples that is a one, where it's a one-stop public hearing for a rezoning case, it's not a two-stop process.
So if we prove this today, and then later down the road, it doesn't seem like it's working out, well, I guess we'll look at it again.
We can change that.
And to that point, every, there's no way to compare counties to cities, because out of 67 counties, five have five separate local acts. And did a lot of research on this, thanks to the help of staff helping me get some information. But the subdivision process is a one-step process with the planning commission, and that is because the county commission gave them that authority. And so the responsibility to the citizens lies on the elected body. And that, I get phone calls about zoning cases because you can contact an elected official. Planning commission members are not recommended to have ex parte communication because they're supposed to be an unbiased board that serves at the pleasure of the county commission who are appointed. But I've gotten phone calls way before it even went, as soon as that sign went up on a piece of property, and you're like, wait a minute, what are you talking about? Let me find it, let me find it, let me find it. And then you find out, well, wait a minute, it hasn't even went to the planning commission yet, and they're like, oh. And I said, just, you got to go through the process, and then, you know, let's see what happens, and explain a lot of different things about what a rezoning is, use, and that kind of stuff. And then you never even hear from them again. And then it goes through the planning commission, they show up at the planning commission, I'm thinking of one particular case in particular, then they never even contacted the elected body again because of such an arduous process and the timeframe that it takes. And so sometimes people get caught off guard, and I think that the best thing to do is to serve our citizens efficiently. And I think rather than use the word streamline, it's more efficient. In the world of Doge, we've been doing things more efficient for years in other areas. But I think this is just one more step. And as someone who served for a long time on planning commissions, I've served on a municipal planning commission for 22 years, I served on the Baldwin County planning, yes, I am that old, for four years. And there is no comparison at all in And there is no comparison at all in, in the way, um, I guess the statutes or whatever that are given to cities versus given to counties, because cities can just create an ordinance. We're not that kind of a creature, because we're a creature of a legislative act. State law gives, um, cities and it, municipalities, I'm sorry, same thing, I guess. But, um, what is so complicated is every one of those five counties, it is a citizen-driven process till it gets to the point where it comes into zoning. And then it is hard. This is the hardest part, in my opinion, of the job that county commissioners in Baldwin County have to do. And, and I'm not going to, I don't know how hard it is in Shelby County and Lee County and the other two counties that have it, but we're, it is very hard here and is often misunderstood. And there is, there's a lot goes into this, and, you know, I know we had really some uncontested rezonings in, in this meeting earlier today, but each and every one of those, I spent tons of time reading them and all that kind of stuff. And so I think this is just a better way to be more efficient and not be confusing. And so I do, I do thank you for, I mean, I didn't come up with it, but I remember times when we had to separate the planning commission meetings during the timeframe that I served was 2008 to 2012. We had to have two meetings a month for the planning commission because they saw subdivision cases on one Thursday night, and two weeks later you saw zoning cases. And some of you in the room may know this, but some of those meetings lasted till after midnight. And it was very, very tough. So we have to hear them anyways. I'm not saying that, like, don't want to do it. I'm just saying that it just, I just think it's just a really unique opportunity that, uh, when you guys were thinking of revamping the, the zoning ordinance, that that came up, and, and I think it was a, a unique opportunity. Thank you.
I think, you know, the, um, part with this, we're, we're more or less aligning ourselves with what the intent of what the zoning was supposed to be to begin with. You know, um, I mean, you know, we had to have a legislative act to do it. And, um, and I think that act actually recommends that the county commission be the one that does this. So I mean, if we're going to, you know, not going to do that, we need to maybe think about changing the amendment to our zoning thing, you know, if we're going to, if we're going to vary away from it too far. You know, I think, you know, um, it's part of what our responsibility is as an elected official, to look at these issues and, and to take care of them. You know, it's, it's not that we're circumventing the, uh, planning commission, you know, we're just, we're trying to help them a lot and taking this responsibility on. They'll still know what's going on, you know, and they'll receive a recommendation from us so that they can plan for, you know, uh, the future of what subdivisions, how it sets into subdivision regulations and everything else. That's what they were more or less originally designed for. You know, I can remember when, um, the, it was the other way around, you know, we did have it for La Juana, and then we even did the subdivision regulations, you know, and everything, all they were was a review board, but we turned that over and said, "No, we're going to let the planning commission have the, have the final say on subdivision regulations, and we take care of the zoning."
Right.
And that's the way it's supposed to be, you know. So I think we'll realign ourselves a lot better with, um, what the intent of the, uh, amendment of the, um, ordinance is supposed to be.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Jay. All right, open up the public hearing. I have one signed up for, for this case, ES6. Ben Gould, if I can pronounce that, Gould? Gould, sorry. I'm bad with last names. You got to...
That's okay. You can pronounce that lots of ways. Name is Ben Gould, uh, 21735 Pillar Street in Fairhope, across the street from the Randall property. First of all, the 15,000 square foot lot RSF2 is great. So we're, we're all for that. Our, our neighborhood is RSF2, so it totally fits. Uh, the only thing I want to comment on otherwise is, is it was distinctly mentioned that mid-density commercial is okay for that property also. And, you know, that's a completely subjective opinion by the Planning and Zoning Commission because Planning District 37 specifically says, and it's also subjective, that there shall be no business or commercial development within one-half mile of the 104181 intersection. So the, the, the planning commission is subjective, the planning district is, is subjective. But my contention is, is that the people who have to live there should be deferred to. Uh, I think that the current local residents should always have the say-so. Planning commission, master plan, it's really all subjective. So much is subjective. But it's the local residents that have to live, live with it. So I just want you all to take that into account. I'm not against the RSF2, but, you know, they could try a PRD, or they could come back and try to get commercial zoning. I just wanted to make the point that they seem to be pushing this mid-density commercial there as a possibility, and we're still totally against that. But we're all for 15,000 square foot lots. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ben. Anybody else? Jay, did you, did you want to comment on any of that? Or did you just? Let me, let me finish this.
Yes, Mr. Clay, what, what he's referring to is the, the master plan in that area shows for moderate dense, uh, um, maybe something other than moderate density. But the master plan would expect higher intensity uses of commercial and higher intensity residential uses. They're getting RSF2. That's not, that's not what they're asking for. It's getting it all to RSF2. That, that reference in the, the staff report was just, uh, explaining what the master plan called for. But that's, you know, the, the good point there that, that the gentleman made is that we have that a lot of places in the county, there's a discrepancy in the, the local provisions, and the master plan, and they don't align. And that's one thing that we're, you know, you all have already asked us to start working on the master plan with the planning commission to correct.
Yeah, the master plan needs work.
Yeah.
Yes.
But for this property, it's RSF2. That was simply a reference to the master plan, what the master plan called for in that area.
And I understand what I think you're mentioning is you're saying that any, but anywhere in this county, anybody can apply for a PRD, but it doesn't necessarily mean that it'll be approved. I think we spoke loud and clear about commercial on 104. At least I did.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the whole commission, that's right.
I, I know, but I mean, I've, I specifically stated it.
Sure.
I get it. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that did not sign up for this case that wants to speak? All right. Close the public hearing on this.
If you'd like to ask any other questions, you can help.
Yeah, thank you, Jay.
Um, I, I do have, um, one part of all of this I would like to mention, which is, when I was writing down my notes, is number three, which is District 26. There's only one change in that on District 26. And, um, I would like to, um, make no changes to District 26 at this time. Looking at the history of zoning in this county, that was one of the very first districts that came into zoning, which is the point clear area. And I don't believe there's been enough engagement with that community to, to know that this is exactly, um, okay. They're usually very vocal. I know that there was a lot of engagement with, uh, District 25, which is the Fort Morgan area. They're very engaged. And so, um, I'm not comfortable with moving forward with that one area of the zoning amendment. And so, um, at the point in time, I, I would actually like to make a motion that we reject the suggested amendments to Section 2.3.26, the local provisions for Planning District 26 from the proposed text amendment to allow staff and our body to, um, have further engagement with the citizens of District 26. I don't think there was any intention whatsoever, um, to, um, not engage them. I just feel like that sometimes people are busy and, um, they, they might have missed this, and I want to give them an opportunity to give us feedback. I want to be loud and clear, saying that this might be what they want. But I've heard from a few that didn't know about it and would like to have more time to engage. They have a very large POA down there, and I would like to make sure that it is their desire to do this. I don't think that leaving this off affects the rest of the amendments, but I'm making that in the form of a motion, and I can reread it if you'd like.
And just to, just for clarity, so, yeah, you, if you, if you just want to pull, remove one part, you can just have a motion and a, and a vote on, to remove that, and then you can vote on everything else separately.
Okay, so I will...
Which, which you just did. You just made that motion.
I did make the motion, yes.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the zoning map amendment and the proposed text amendments to all other sections of the zoning ordinance as advertised and recommended by staff.
And I'll second that motion.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, staff. I know it's been a lot of work.
All right, let's go, go on with the, let's see. Public comments. I got two people that signed up. Thomas Jenkins, if I pronounced it right? You want to come up? You got three minutes, sir?
I present the day's first thing. Court orders, documents I was issued yesterday in terms of eligibility...
Come up here and, come up here and talk.
I'm going to pass this here to the governor.
You handed it to me. Yeah.
All right. Here's what I was having my set of... I'm going to get some. I'm going to be a little different. I'm not here to sing kumbaya or talk about licensure. I'm Thomas Jenkins, Gulf Shores resident and contractor since 2010, Louisiana Post-certified, former assistant chief of police. I'm here on behalf of every resident in Baldwin County. I'm also an aspiring role model today. I served 932 residents in a one-and-a-half-square-mile solo patrol, the smell of excrement daily in my shared office with dispatch, a rat named Terry that our police cat couldn't catch. And I still managed to render better service than I've gotten from this entire county and three agencies: Orange Beach, Gulf Shores, and the judicial system of Baldwin County at large, your circuit clerk, Brenda. And I'm here to speak on that today. I've got baby reindeer, one of them there, they thems, and more, wanting or wishing for us to die. And we still are being treated as a joke and do not feel safe. And if you look at me, I'm a pretty imposing character, but I can't beat a large SUV in my Buick sedan. I was chuckled at for my email name, thefuzzyfiddler@gmail.com, at Orange Beach over the phone, and it was not sent my email of my redacted report. What am I supposed to prepare my case with without my narrative where I was made a sworn statement that my life was threatened? Gulf Shores, my, my they/them stalker that I don't know where they exist, they have failed, completely failed to locate or identify this person. Again, I'm treated as a joke. And the best for last, yesterday and last week and a couple more times, I could not celebrate my dead father's birthday that I lost at 22-years-old and still came to stand before you today, angry and loud. Could not celebrate him yesterday because I had to go deal with Brenda. And let me tell you about her. She put me in fear that my case was on the line because I dared say, "I hope to God this is not how you treat women too." And she took it as, "Y'all aren't passing this off because I'm a man," versus a woman. So what? I'm in fear of my life. I've said it to everybody, how loud, how emphatic do I have to say it to this county? Can this room hear me? Help us! Do you want families to feel safe, or do you want them to fight for a readable piece of paper? I was chuckled at in that lobby when I went to the bathroom. How much of a joke? What is this place, is what I said to myself yesterday. I came from an absolute hellhole of a town and still got better emergency services. And if y'all think this town's going to grow, you better start with your emergency services. That's my three minutes. Y'all have a better day.
All right, thank you very much. All right, uh, let's see. Blair Castro? Ms. Blair? You're here. You got three minutes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name's Blair Castro. I live at 7074 Rain Tree Lane in Gulf Shores, so Commissioner Gruber would be my commissioner. I am an attorney. I'm from Pensacola, Florida. I just moved here to Baldwin County from Escambia County, Florida on March 1st. Also teach law at Pensacola State College. I own a PR and marketing firm, and I've actually focused on government and political, um, PR and marketing. I'm here today really to talk about two issues, um, and that is government efficiency and transparency. I know you were talking about Doge and how you like efficiencies. I do have some suggestions and recommendations that I'd like you guys to possibly consider implementing in terms of streamlining some of your processes, particularly with the clerk of court's office. And also want to talk about technology. There seems to be a lack of technological advancements going on in the Baldwin County court system in particular. I'm not sure exactly where that falls under whose purview, but I wanted to sort of dip into that briefly within my next two minutes here. Number one, inaccessibility at the clerk's office. So I attempted to contact the Foley's clerk's office, the satellite office, multiple times over a three-day period. I never got through one time. I was never able to place one phone call. When I called the main clerk's office up in Baymanet, they told me there's only one phone line that goes to Foley, Fairhope, and Baymanet. And I was like, "Okay." But if I wanted to get a simple question answered about a piece of paper or a form, I would have to drive to Baymanet, an hour from Gulf Shores, to get that. The closest thing I would have to do was go to Foley, which is at least 30 minutes. To me, that's really unacceptable to have that sort of lack of access in our government services. And it is true that the clerk, Ms. Ganey, on her website, she, she's running for reelection, I believe, or it's an older site that's up, she said that she has ensured Foley and Fairhope offices were fully staffed at all times. This is her words. She created a new communication system to ensure the public can reach clerk staff directly when needed. My experience completely contradicts that in all the ways. I was left without any answers and forced to drive an hour for basic information. It was incredibly frustrating. So my call to action to the county in some way is to add more phone lines or ensure that phones are answered during business hours to provide some sort of alternative contact methods. I actually helped build a portal in Escambia County. I've helped build, um, databases that track our homelessness throughout the county, our shelters, our food services. So I know this technology, I know the cost of it, and I know that the job of the county commission is essentially allotting funds for different projects. Several months ago, when I was considering a move to Baldwin County from Pensacola, I signed up for vendor registry to see what possible jobs were out there for someone like me who makes these databases, who makes online portals and makes communication systems more streamlined. I hadn't seen a single technology-based bid come through. I don't know why that is. Of course, there's a lot of construction and zoning-type projects, but I'd really liked the opportunity to explore how those websites and portals are built and have the opportunity to bid on that if possible.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
I think to follow up with the email.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I have my restraining order back? I forgot to collect.
Yeah, I'll give it back to you. You want the copy also?
Yeah. That was what I was given. That was what I was told to use in case I need to use it so that the reporting officer could read it. That's your bid.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Press questions? Is there press here? I don't see anybody from the press. All right, Commissioner comments. Commissioner Ball, you want to go first?
I don't have any.
All right. Commissioner Gruber? Commissioner Underwood?
Just, you know, again, thank the staff for, um, the work that they did to get this agenda published and get it out so that citizens can see what we're doing ahead of time. And, um, again, uh, thank you recipients of the, uh, employees who were recognized today. And, uh, also, um, just want to, um, thank everyone for what they do in, in this county to make it a, a great place to live. Thank you very much.
You guys are excellent, and you really help us a lot. And I'm just thankful that you choose to work here. And I want to shout out to my husband for putting up with me for 35 years yesterday.
That was good.
I knew you would say that. I know you would say that. I put up with him, too.
That's right, no. The only thing that I would say is like the commissioner said about the employees, you know, thank y'all for what you're doing, putting this together. There is a retired, and some of you have probably seen it, there's a retired deputy, Darren Williamson. He was a captain when he retired, and he's got some medical issues, so just please pray for him. Keep him in your prayers, just like anybody else that needs it. So I just wanted to say that. But any, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So may I.
All right, we adjourn.